Chicago Med premieres next Tuesday on NBC. On an all-new Tonight Show starring Jimmy Fallon, Daniel Radcliffe drops by, NBC Tonight. Now, from the station on your side, this is Wavy News 10.
Neighbors have had the same concern for weeks.
I think there's just a lot of question about all the secrecy going on right now.
And Portsmouth City Council has given everyone the same response.
Mayor Wright, anything you have some strong words for us?
Frustration has been boiling over.
I am angry that my city has become a laughing stock of the tidewater area.
But tonight, our Jason Marks spearheaded a council confrontation.
Come here. Sir, you can't come back here.
Mayor.
And after weeks of ignoring our questions and concerns from residents, we finally confronted Mayor Kenny Wright.
Ten on your side, Jason Marks, just got back from tonight's council meeting. He's in the newsroom now. So Jason, what did the mayor actually say to you?
Well, Tom, you know, we've tried to talk with Mayor Wright over and over and over again. We wanted to ask him about all the high-ranking openings in Portsmouth. At least 11 high-profile employees have been fired or quit in just the last couple of months. We also wanted to ask about the way he talks to residents when they voice concerns at meetings. We waited all the way to the end of tonight's meeting to talk with him, and here is the entire encounter unedited with the mayor.
Sir, how you doing?
Good. How about you?
I'm fine.
Can I shake my hand?
What can I do for you?
Are you gonna push me a little bit more?
Hey, great job, sir.
Mayor, do you have a second? Mayor, can I ask you some questions?
Yes, sir. What do you need?
Uh, well, can you stop for a second? Mayor, can I ask you about all the openings here in the city?
Great job, man. I didn't forget you this time.
Mayor, you got a second to talk to us? We'd like to ask you about all the openings in the city. Mayor, you got a second?
Mayor. Sir, you can't come back here.
Mayor.
You cannot come back here.
Mayor, can I ask you a question? Mayor, you got a second?
Security. Security.
Mayor, can I ask you a question? Yeah, absolutely. Mayor, can you tell me about the fact that there's so many openings in the city? Mayor?
And there you have it. Once again, very little coming out of Kenny Wright. Now, I spoke with several residents tonight who believe, or they told me, they just cannot believe the way that this mayor is acting. We're gonna continue to try to talk with them again and again until we can get answers for you at home. In the newsroom, Jason Marks, ten on your side. And Portsmouth City Council has agreed to change a street name in honor of a local man, an update to a story reported last month. People living on Tire Neck Road told us they did not want part of their street renamed after Bishop Ted Thomas. The name change will only affect the road in front of the new community temple. Some neighbors say they don't agree with the change because the church has excluded them.
All new tonight, Portsmouth City Council has rejected the proposal to rezone Victory Village. The request would have paved the way for hundreds of apartments and new businesses called the Commons at Portsmouth Center. The property is right near the Tidewater Community College campus, near Victory Boulevard and Greenwood Drive. Breaking news, now Hampton Police are investigating a deadly shooting. We just got this video back from Lassiter Drive near Big Bethel Road. Officers say they found a man's body there around 7:00 tonight. Police say they're waiting to release his name until they can contact his family. We'll be sure to let you know as soon as we have another update on air and online.
Back to Portsmouth, and a breaking story coming in from there. Police say they're looking for two people who robbed a gas station on Victory Boulevard around 6:30 tonight. Police say they hit a Diamond Express, and you're getting a look at surveillance pictures from inside. Investigators say they were wearing masks and had guns when they demanded cash. No one was hurt, but if you recognize them, call police. All new tonight, we are getting a better idea of how Norfolk city leaders are working to fight crime near Old Dominion University. The campus sits in an area that's no stranger to violence. Our Aaron Kelly joins us live outside City Hall where leaders discuss the issues. What's the plan, Aaron?
Well, the city manager, Marcus Jones, unveiled four new measures as part of this plan that he called "Safe, Healthy, and Inclusive Communities."
I don't think we have time to wait to make sure that it gets approved by all these. They should have approved it three months ago.
That was Councilman Andy Protegeru earlier this month during a discussion about violence in the city. He said the city needed to implement a plan. Days later, police say someone shot and killed 20-year-old Joseph Bose on Halloween at 35th Street and Kilim Avenue. Two weeks before that, a sailor was shot and killed, and gunfire hurt four ODU students at off-campus parties. At a council work session Tuesday night, city manager Marcus Jones unveiled a new strategy aimed at neighborhoods near college campuses.
The city manager always wants us to collaborate with neighborhoods, so this is just to really formalize that process.
He said ODU and Norfolk Police will have joint patrols with officers in the same cars, and additional enforcement hours Friday and Saturday. The city also plans to add two veteran code officials to work on neighborhood quality as part of a program to reduce poorly-managed properties.
We know it takes the community to help us do this. We can't do it by ourselves.
There are two other parts of the plan. The city wants to invest in additional lighting and also asks some residents to keep a porch light on. They're also working to put together a working group of all five institutes of higher learning to come together for sharing their best practices. Live in Norfolk, Aaron Kelly, ten on your side.
All new tonight, police dispatchers in Norfolk say officers are investigating a shooting that happened before 8:00 on Wyoming Avenue in the Coleman Place neighborhood. They say one man was shot in the leg, and medics took him to the hospital.
New information about a story two years in the making. Virginia Beach city leaders are pushing ahead with plans for an arena at the oceanfront. They came to a tentative agreement with developers last night, and they spent tonight hashing out details of the proposal before the public weighs in. Liz Palca is there and joins us now to break down the developments. Liz?
Nicole, today was about getting into every detail of this arena deal, from the lease terms to financing to parking. The deputy city manager touched on just about everything.
This private ownership is a pretty unique model.
The Virginia Beach Arena deal is finally on the table for the public to view. Deputy city manager Doug Smith presented the details of the agreement to city council today.
One of the things you'll hear me say a lot, you know, this is a private arena, and one of the things we have to get away from is thinking of this as a public arena, because it's not.
We've known developer United States Management would invest private money into this project, $200 million. Smith said during his presentation, the city would fund $76 million in infrastructure improvements around the arena. That would come from the city's tourism investment program, which includes a hotel room tax. Smith also said USM will lease the 5.8 acres of land for 60 years, and he went over the lease terms from arena parking to what happens if the developer breaches the agreement. Joe Gialardi is USM's vice president and arena program director.
We knew that for this to be successful, it had to achieve the goals of citizens and all the other stakeholders.
And for Councilman Bob Dyer, this deal does achieve those goals.
The end result is gonna be extremely positive to the point where even a skeptic like myself is it, you know, I can't tell you how excited I am for this and what it can bring to the future of Virginia Beach.
Councilwoman Barbara Henley did say she had concerns, bringing up USM's bank is not yet named in the contract.
I will have a little crack to have a little bit of an open mind, but right now I've got this as a major concern that someone has to make me very comfortable with this in order for me to support this.
Councilman John Moss also said that he supports this deal, but encouraged residents to go to the city's website and read the agreement summaries for themselves, then show up to the public hearing on December 1st. I'm Liz Palca, ten on your side.
Well, the owner of a motel has reached a plea agreement with the city of Norfolk. The M-Star Hotel on Shore Drive burned down in August, and several days later, the city cited Karit Amin with dozens of violations. Today, we learned Amin will pay a $200 fine for several charges, but he insists he did nothing wrong.
All new tonight, Newport News Police identified the victim of a deadly crash. Investigators say 38-year-old Corey Daniels from Yorktown died early this morning. They say his vehicle crashed into a tree at Warwick Boulevard and Main Street. Police say the vehicle was traveling quickly when it ran off the road. Investigators say Daniels was not wearing a seatbelt.
All new tonight, police have arrested a man they say exposed himself to a family in Pecosin. Investigators sent us these pictures of 48-year-old Christopher Gamski of Portsmouth. Last month, investigators say he stalked a girl and her mother at the Farm Fresh on With Creek Road. They say he exposed himself to the girl when she was alone. Police arrested him last night in Buckingham County in central Virginia.
White House hopefuls took the stage tonight for another debate. Eight Republican candidates squared off in Milwaukee. Several recent polls suggest Donald Trump and Dr. Ben Carson are the frontrunners. Jeb Bush was also there, along with Florida Senator Marco Rubio, Harley Fiorina, Ted Cruz, John Kasich, and Rand Paul. Look for a full breakdown of the debate tomorrow morning during Wavy News 10 Today at 4:30.
All new tonight, a judge has sentenced a white supremacist to death for killing three people in Kansas. Frazier Glenn Miller targeted Jews during his attacks last year. Miller said he shot his victims because he wanted to kill Jewish people before he died. All three of his victims were actually Christians. A jury convicted him in August.
All new, investigators have arrested and charged two Virginia men they say planned to attack synagogues and black churches. The FBI arrested the men near Richmond on Sunday. Court documents say they tried to buy weapons and explosives in hopes of starting a race war. Investigators also arrested a third man they say planned to rob a jewelry store with the suspects. Deputies and police officers in North Carolina arrested more than 600 people for drinking and driving over Halloween weekend. That's nearly 20 more than they made the same weekend last year. We got the results of the governor's highway safety program today. The top five counties for arrest are Wake, Mecklenburg, Forsyth, Guilford, and Cabras.
Still to come, a former police officer from Hampton Road shot and killed in Jordan. Hear what else we've learned about him tonight.
Secretary of State John Kerry says climate change is threatening military bases and the city of Norfolk. Hear more from his visit to our area today.
And here's a look at what I've been working on during the evening for you. Temperatures gonna be down, and then they're gonna be up, and then they're gonna be down again, then they're gonna be way down coming up for the weekend. I'll have it all for you. That'll be coming up in just a few minutes.
Family of a child with cerebral palsy will soon be able to ride comfortably again, where police found their specially-equipped van stolen from a local hotel.
You're watching Wavy News 10 at 11 with Tom Shad, Nicole Livas, Chief Meteorologist Don Slater, and Bruce Rader Sports. It's a giant fishing company creating jobs for some, but damaging the livelihood of others.
Just weeks after our initial investigation, ten on your side went to see the operation firsthand.
The big fight over a little fish, Thursday at 6:00.
Okay, so what else can we do in the community?
Big Z could do parks and river cleanup.
Oh. Okay, big guy. You take it easy now. We're gonna get you home. Get him, Roger! Or we could offer our celebration special meal.
Let's go with that idea.
The celebration special meal: four chicken fingers, Texas toast, crinkle fries, Zach's sauce, and a 32-ounce drink. Zach's Beasts, proud to serve our communities for 25 years.
The Toyota Model Year Closeout is on, with impressive last-chance savings at your Virginia Toyota dealer. Start with two years' no-cost maintenance on every new Toyota, and cash in big on remaining 2015 RAV4s with a low payment lease for only $199 a month. Or buy a RAV with 750 cash back from Toyota, or choose no-interest financing for five years. See your Virginia Toyota dealer and BuyAToyota.com for your best deals. Toyota, let's go places. To make sure our customers get the best service, I'm going undercover.
Hey, I need to rent a car.
Jim?
Yeah.
We got you covered. Elephant called, let us know you were coming.
Great.
I already have your keys.
And that's it?
That's it.
That's refreshing.
How's the service out there, boss?
Perfect, just like my undercover work.
Right on.
There's no disguising it. Mark hair, less cost. Discover the elephant difference at elephant.com.
This Veterans Day at Ashley Furniture Home Store. Find hundreds of deals storewide, all with 24 months no interest. Beds only $349, sofas just $499, and more, and soon. Ashley Furniture Home Store, this is home. Shop now in Chesapeake and Virginia Beach.
Start your day smarter with the Wavy 10 News App.
Save time by getting vital information.
Instantly, at your fingertips.
Up-to-the-minute weather forecast, traffic jams, and breaking news.
Make the Wavy 10 News App.
Part of your morning routine.
Closed captioning is brought to you by Michael &amp; Son Services.
We are working to learn more about a man shot and killed overseas who had local ties. A gunman killed James Creach in Jordan. The Tampa Bay Times reports he lived in Florida, but used to work for the Virginia Beach Police Department. The 42-year-old died when a Jordanian police officer opened fire at a training center Monday. The State Department says another American died in the attack while working for a defense contractor. A total of five people died, six others were hurt.
The State Department's releasing few details about a Chesapeake man who died in Yemen. The State Department says Houthi rebels detained John Hayman at an airport, and he died in custody. They could not say exactly how it happened. Hayman spent 20 years in the Army. After retiring, he worked for a defense contractor. He leaves behind his wife and seven children. Friends in his Ohio hometown say he dedicated his life to serving his country.
He was doing the last several years in a dangerous part of the world, you know, just really shows that Cincinnati is just a patriotic area, patriotic town, and he was just a true hero.
We are working to find out more about exactly what happened. We'll let you know as soon as we have more information.
New tonight, a lawsuit is moving forward against Dominion Virginia Power. It says coal ash, arsenic, and other chemicals are leaking into the Elizabeth River from a former power plant in Chesapeake. A federal judge denied Dominion's request to dismiss the Sierra Club's lawsuit late last week. A successful lawsuit could mean Dominion would have to remove coal ash stored at the site.
Secretary of State John Kerry says climate change is threatening national security. He wants local students to help him find a solution to this global issue. He spent the morning in Norfolk sharing his views with students at ODU. He announced a new task force that will combine climate change and analysis of national security threats. Kerry says it's even threatening Naval Station Norfolk, the world's largest naval installation.
The land it is built on is literally sinking, and all the roads leading and into, out of the base here are flooded. That affects military readiness.
The Outer Banks and Eastern Shore are most at risk when water rises.
Now, your Superdopper 10 Forecast with Chief Meteorologist Don Slater.
And we've gotten the latest update from the hurricane center on Tropical Storm Kate. It is still a tropical storm, and I wanted to show it to you real, real quickly because I don't think it's gonna amount to anything for, certainly not for us. It is still likely, though, to become a hurricane overnight, and by 7:00 tomorrow morning, it's barely at that hurricane threshold, category 1, 75 mile an hour winds. And here is where we are. So it's gonna stay well on offshore. An unusual late-season storm, there's where it is tomorrow evening. Thereafter, it becomes what's known as an extratropical storm. It moves into cold waters of the North Atlantic and heads on up toward Ireland. You can see it to the west of Ireland as of that point. So here's where everything is. You see where this storm is, right on into here, very, very well-formed, but we're zipping along, moving northeastward at 35 miles an hour, so we don't have to worry about it. It'll kick up the surf a little bit overnight and tomorrow morning for hatters, and that's about it. Here's our big story, sunshine for tomorrow. We're seeing the clouds break up already, 10 to 15 mile an hour winds for right now, and into tomorrow morning, and into tomorrow noon. But I think during the afternoon hours, the wind that there is is gonna tend to fall apart just a bit and drop on off to about 10 miles an hour at the very end of the day. The big thing is a lot more sunshine for the day tomorrow. Looks like a good one, likely be into the mid-60s. 63 is normal for a high temperature for the day tomorrow, and it looks like it'll be around 65, 66 degrees. That's not bad, better than the 70s that we had. It's not as warm as the 70s that we had earlier in the day today. It's gonna be a nicer day tomorrow. Here's where things are for Thursday. It'll warm back on up into the low 70s because instead of a northeasterly or northwesterly wind, we'll have a southwesterly wind, 10 to 20 miles an hour at the noon hour, and it'll be 10 to 20 at 7:00 in the evening. One little wind shift line moves through. There's another one right on into here at 7:00 in the evening. It'll drop through during the evening. And then this is Thursday night at midnight. You'll note the actual colder air, the real cold front, is off toward the mountains, and that'll slip through pretty quietly overnight, Thursday night and into Friday morning. That'll really cool things off for Friday and the weekend. What's going on beyond that? Well, we're gonna take you into the weekend. Thursday night at midnight, go all the way on into Sunday. See a few clouds every now and then, but basically, it looks like we're rain-free coming up for the weekend. As we are by Sunday evening at 7:00. Lots of sunshine, but a definitely cooler weekend, and it's cooler out there right now, 58, 59, 61 degrees. The wind is gonna hold the temperature up just a bit. Colder air is denser, and so it sinks. It's allowed to sink. Well, the thing about it is with this wind up just a little bit, it mixes the air up a little bit and doesn't allow the colder air to really kind of get set up. But it's still gonna get a little cool during the overnight hours, likely into the low 50s inland areas, and we're at 55, 56 degrees near the coastline overnight, 59, 58, 56, and this is kind of an average, and we're clearing out already. During the day tomorrow, we're likely to see 55, starting the day. Little on the cool side, little breezy, 10 to 15, maybe 10 to 20 mile an hour winds. 66 degrees at 3:00 in the afternoon. That's certainly cooler than the 70s that we saw across parts of the area for the day today. Stays clear on into tomorrow evening. Thursday, definitely warmer, 73 degrees. Now, an isolated shower is possible. Now, remember that little line that moves through during the afternoon? That could contain a stray shower or two, but it's not real, real likely. Friday, 64 degrees, 56, though, on Saturday, 61 on Sunday. Definitely an autumn weekend ahead, but it looks very, very nice and quiet. We had our active weather last night. I think we're gonna see quiet weather for tomorrow and quiet weather on into the weekend.
Good weather for those Veterans Day observers.
Looking forward to a nice one.
Well, police have found a specially-equipped van, but they're still looking for the person who stole it.
Here are follow-up with the family who was visiting from out of town when their vehicle disappeared.
We're on your side with the latest news, weather, and traffic as you get ready to head out the door every morning.
Tune in to Wavy News 10 Today beginning at 4:30 before the sun comes up, and we're on the air until 9:00 AM on Fox 43.
Chad Lewis with 10 Time Saber Traffic, weekdays on Wavy News 10 Today.
Everything was so simple. I test drove a lot of cars before I found the right one for us.
I was pretty sure I knew what I wanted, but they helped me narrow it down.
They had the answers, which led me to the perfect car. They helped us as soon as we got there.
I was really surprised how easy it was.
Upgrade to a new Toyota with these great offers on the Corolla, Camry, and RAV4. Now get a lifetime warranty at First Team Toyota. View all offers at FirstTeamToyota.com.
All you have to do is walk these streets to sense the flavor of Louisiana cooking, and you can taste it in my new Puffay Spicy Garlic Butterfly Shrimp. Get eight shrimp, a side, a biscuit, and sauce for just $499.
I was an addict, homeless, broken, and hungry.
My son was born disabled, and I was unable to work.
Over 350 men, women, and children depend on Union Mission Ministries every day, and we depend on you.
I came for breakfast and it changed my life.
Hope begins with a meal and care for our homeless neighbors. Just $20 gives food and life-changing care for 10 people. Donate at unionmissionministries.org.
God bless you.
This holiday season, don't get all wound up with an introductory offer that leads to high interest rates later. Instead, get a fixed rate as low as 7.99% APR when you open a credit card with AB&amp;B Federal Credit Union. Knowing you're guaranteed a great low rate year-round will make you wanna dance like a sugarplum berry. Apply for your AB&amp;B credit card today.
You decided to downsize your home. Then I said, the contract should include an inspection, which revealed you weren't alone. Let a Remax agent guide you. Remax, dream with your eyes open.
Wavy TV's Code for Families Drive kicks off at ODU Saturday, November 14.
Start your shopping early with great savings during our Holiday Prep Event. Right now, select designer suits are just $229.99. All outerwear is 50% off. Plus, buy one, get one free on more great looks. Survive the holidays with Men's Warehouse.
By Swat Keys with Nissan of Norfolk.
Visit us today at swatkeys.com.
The new Wavy.com Weather App. Current weather conditions, real-time radar, and no winds severe weather threatens. Download it for free today.
Always like happy endings. We have good news for a Kentucky family who said someone stole their van in Norfolk.
Since we first reported this last night, police have found the van that had special equipment for a wheelchair.
I really think it's because of the news coverage that it was located.
Norfolk Police found that stolen van on Larkin Street. They are dusting it for prints and planning to return it. The family says it is a huge blessing.
He said, are you sitting down? And I said, no. And he said, well, they found our van, and oh my gosh, we are just thrilled to death.
Police say someone took the van from the residence inn on Military Highway. They still don't have any leads on suspects, but the family, including Leah with cerebral palsy, will soon be able to travel comfortably again.
The Admirals were at home tonight, and does Bud Foster wanna be the next head coach at Virginia Tech? What do you think? The sports rap is next.
Our community, the people, the water, the history. We're all working together for a better future. It's inspiring. We are your neighbors, your friends, your family, and giving back what we can to our community has always been a top priority. For the next 100 years and beyond, for the most important things in life, Riverside Health System. Caring for others is we would care for those we love, celebrating 100 years.
Here in Vineland, New Jersey, where Progresso Light Soups are made, we'll never give up our cheddar, our cream, and especially our bacon. So we figured out a way to add rich ingredients like this into 22 light soups, all with 100 calories or less per serving. So if you want to eat light and not give up rich flavor, do what we do. Make it Progresso.
When I walk into Cavalier Ford, I feel like I'm at home.
They know their customers by name.
Cavalier Ford is a very personal experience.
Cavalier's different because they gave me the bottom-line pricing upfront.
I don't do any negotiations. They give me the best price upfront.
None of the other dealerships did that.
I wouldn't even think about getting a vehicle anywhere else.
Visit us one time, and I promise we'll be your dealership for life.
The beast was as long as the boat. For seven hours, we did battle, until I said, "You will not beat me!"
Break. What should I do with your fish?
Kerry.
Just put it in the cooler.
If you're a fisherman, you tell tales. It's what you do. If you wanna save 15% or more on car insurance, you switch to GEICO. It's what you do.
Put the fish in the cooler!
Have your next burger with a side of awesome. The one-of-a-kind creamy blend of sweet and tangy, Miracle Whip, and Proud of It.
At Kraft, we start with quality ingredients, all expertly blended to make our mayo, so you can take whatever you're making from good to amazing.
Now through Wednesday at Grand Furniture, march in for Veterans Day sale savings of 20 to 50% storewide, plus up to five years' no interest. And please, take time to honor the men and women who have served our country. It's why we give members of the military free delivery. And remember, everyone gets credit at Grand. Apply online at grandfurniture.com. Our Veterans Day sale is more than a way for everyone to save. It's Grand Furniture's thank you to all of our veterans.
For the past 28 years, Bud Foster has been roaming the sidelines of Virginia Tech, considered one of the best defensive coaches in college football. By year's end, Frank Beamer's reign as head coach will end in Blacksburg. Does Foster want his boss's job? You bet he does. I'm Bruce Rader. Bud Foster actually laughed today when he was asked if he'd be interested in becoming the Hokies' new head coach. "Yeah," Foster said, "I've put a lot of time and effort into this thing. I don't think this program needs a culture change." The 56-year-old admits that the school needs to do a better job recruiting in-state players. Whether or not Tech Athletic Director Whit Babcock will consider keeping Foster remains to be seen. Coach Beamer's very short farewell tour begins in just three days before another national television audience on ESPN. The primetime event is set for Thursday night when Virginia Tech travels to Atlanta for Coach Beamer's final installment of the Battle of the Tex. Virginia Tech against Georgia Tech. Beamer's last game in Atlanta against a Yellow Jacket team that has struggled this season.
You know, I think our players look forward to it. We practiced really well. There've been a couple of distractions, but the players have handled it great, our coaches have handled it great, as far as I'm concerned. But yet, it's still, we've got to go play great.
Neither Virginia Tech or Georgia Tech will win the ACC Coastal Division this season, so Thursday night's game is crucial for the Hokies if they hope to send their coach off to retirement with a bowl game trip. Hey, it's hard to believe that the new Norfolk Admirals play their 10th game of the season tonight at home against the Elmira Jackals. Let me take a scope where the Admirals have struggled on the road, but they played well on their home ice so far. First period, the Elmira goaltender is out of position and Josh Curry is going to make him pay. Scores his fifth goal of the season here. Elmira coach Jamie Russell, hey, he's calling for a high stick, but the goal stands. Norfolk up 1 to 0. The Jackals will come back, though. Jacob McDonald, the wristner that ties the game up at 1. Norfolk State would lose this one 4 to 3 and now hit the road beginning Friday in New York against the same Elmira Jackals. Notre Dame has moved into the top four in the second college football playoff selection committee rankings of the season, but it was the Fighting Irish that ended up the big winner after LSU's loss moving from number five to the top four. And after beating LSU Saturday night, Alabama moved up as well. Clemson remains number one with Alabama moving up two spots to number two. Ohio State staying at number three, and there's Notre Dame up a spot to number four.
Toyota says thank you to the men and women who serve our country, soldiers, sailors, Marines, airmen, and guardsmen. The sacrifices you make for your nation's freedom and protection are appreciated every day. Toyota and your Hampton Roads Toyota dealers would like to help the service members and their families with a $1,000 military offer on any new Toyota. This is in addition to other current offers. Please join Toyota in supporting our troops. A simple thank you when you have the chance goes a long way. Toyota, let's go places.
It was 4,000 miles to Radford University, but he journeyed here to do life-changing undergraduate research. She found her passion for communications at Radford and traveled the world advocating for children. Inspired by nurses who cared for her mother, she's following in their footsteps. There are many reasons you'll achieve more at Radford University. Small classes, hands-on experiences, and dedicated faculty will help you reach your goals. Discover your own reasons at Radford.edu.
At Sam's Club, find top brands at members-only prices. Here's the savings breakdown. Five pack of Clorox wipes only $13.48. Savings breakdown, just $2.70 a canister. Get ready to party with 186 Dixie Ultra Paper Plates, less than 8 cents each. Tide Pods 120 count for $24.98. Savings breakdown, about 21 cents per load. Join your new club in Norfolk now and get up to a $20 gift card. Sam's Club, life is better in the club.
Value City Furniture presents, How to Binge Watch TV. First, enjoy family time while waiting for your favorite show to drop an entire season online.
It's time.
There you go.
Marshmallow.
Next, reclaim your place on your ultimate comfort sectional from Value City Furniture.
You crying?
It's the ultimate value, combining the comfort of down with the bounce back of memory foam.
It'll look good as new whenever you decide to get up.
Perfect. And that's how to buy the perfect piece.
Uh-oh.
At Value City Furniture.
You know that you might have a foundation problem. You've been thinking about calling JES for a free inspection and estimate. And thinking, so what are you waiting for? Call the name you can trust for the foundation repair solution you need.
Since 1993, JES has fixed over 20,000 homes and businesses with foundation problems just like yours.
Make the call. Call JES today for your free inspection and estimate.
The high school football playoffs begin this week, but go to Wavy.com and click on Sports for the Friday Night Lights. Top 10 Plays of the Week are really good this week, only on Wavy.com. And join me on Friday night for the playoff edition of Friday Night Lights.
We love Friday Night Lights.
Always look forward to that. The weather should be good, too.
Yeah, weather should be terrific for that. And it'll start, it'll be a little on the cool side, but it won't be that awful yet. Here's a look of what's going on for tomorrow. A little cooler, 66, 63 is a normal high temperature. Have a good Veterans Day. If the weather should cooperate. 73 on Thursday, outside chance of rain, a little cooler Friday, a lot cooler coming up Saturday and Sunday. Jeremy will have more tomorrow morning.
That's right, and thank you for your service, veterans.
That's right. Have a good night.